Okay, this is Tide. He is a 26-year-old off-the-track thoroughbred. He did race and he is also a fox hunting horse, retired fox hunting horse. He is a lesson horse that's ridden about five times a week. He's actually with his mom right now. And we're gonna do a little bit of walking and let's see what he looks like. So if we can see him walk to the side. Good boy Tide, or we'll do away. So Tide has super tight stifles. He actually looks pretty good today, but he is pretty tight in his stifles. And he does get swelling in his back left leg. And coming forward. Good boy. He does have tight shoulders as well, but he does look really good today. Good boy.
Are you a good one?
And then can we get to the side, please? Yeah, please. And so Tide does have chronic limes. He does have a hard time keeping weight on. And we think that that has something to do with his chronic limes. And his back is pretty tight. And then come this way across for me, please. And that back is pretty tight, so we're gonna work on that today. Beautiful. So now can we get a little bit of a trot?
Sure.
Going this way?
Do we do a little circle or?
Do a trot going straight down for me? Just a little bit of a ways to like the end of the jump, if that's okay? Good boy. And so we see those stifles. But overall. Alright, and back, please. Come on Tide. Good boy. Maybe dragging that back left just a little bit. And then if you can trot him away and towards me, that would be wonderful. Maybe kicking up that right hip. We just slipped. Kicking up that right hip just a little bit. And then bringing him back, please. Come on Tide. He is a very good boy. Good boy. Thank you so much.
Okay, we're going.
Yeah, we're rolling. Okay, so we're gonna do my first full film session. And this is Tide. We just did his gait analysis, seeing where he's tight. We kinda have an idea of what we're working with. I'm gonna go ahead and check his vitals and go from there.
Just wait to the left.
Hold on. Okay.
There we go. Fizzle, Fizzle, Fizzle. Fizzle's gonna come.
Hi Fizzle. Hi baby. Okay, so we're working with about 19 beats per minute. I'm gonna go ahead and check his breathing, see what his breath rate is.
Fizzle. Come here Fizzle. Come here Fizzle, good girl.
Alright, about 14 breaths per minute is what I'm getting. Good boy, buddy. Let's go ahead and check his hydration. Hi buddy. So Tide is pretty dehydrated. It's okay, buddy. We're gonna check capillary refill. Alright, that's pretty good. That's two second refills, good boy. Good boy. And teeth are a little... We have this underbite shifting over to the left a little bit, so that could be something with his jaw. And we'll check that out. Let's check his jaw out. We are pretty tight in that jaw. There's not much movement going on in there. Check the other side. Okay, a little bit better on that side. Still pretty tight, and that can make sense for his teeth alignment. Um, let's check your TMJ, can you come down with us? Little bit of clicking there. Good boy. Check the other side. Just a little bit of clicking on that side. Good boy. Good boy. So let's palpate the vertebrae. Oh, we got some cracks. Good boy. We got some cracking, good boy. Good boy. I guess we gotta move, baby. We gotta move. Fizzle, C7 on this side, good boy. Oh, we're a little stiff. Pretty good there. Hi baby.
Fizzle, honey, come here, please.
Other side, good boy. Good boy Tide, so good, thank you. That feels pretty good. I'm gonna go ahead and start to check joint mobilization, see how he's doing up in here. Okay, we're doing okay here. Shoulder. Cause it actually feels pretty good here. Good boy. Check the other side. This feels much better than the other side. We have a lot more movement here. And check the shoulder. It feels pretty good. Knee, I forgot to check the knee on the other side. We'll check the knee on the other side. That feels pretty good. Good boy, let's check your knee real quick. Make me work, good boy. So this is pretty tight. So what we're feeling, what I'm feeling is that this whole left side or right side is much more limited than the left side. So we have some tightness down here. We have tightness in the knee. And then the shoulder, it feels pretty good, but it's not as loose and mobile as the left side. Feeling now on just this door side. And so I already know based off the gait analysis that he is pretty tight in his stifle. So I'm assuming as I start to work down into this back leg, he's gonna be pretty tight.
He really wants to be part of the video.
He wants to be part of the video.
Fizzle, come here. Fizzle, honey, away from his leg. Hey, good girl.
Alright, so we have very little movement down here. And same thing here, very little movement. And then hip joint. We're okay here, we're tight. We are very limited down here in the stifle. But the hip moves okay. Can you pick it up, please? Thank you. And this... Can I have it, please? And this barely moves, we're really tight down here. And this was the leg that he has some swelling in, and I can feel that down here. Check the stifle. Pretty tight in here. Check the hip joints. And that moves not as well as the other side. Thank you, you can put it down now, thank you. And so I feel tightness as I pick up that leg, he's already guarding this leg.
Fizzle.
And I can feel... You can put it down.
Come here, honey.
And I can feel this swelling down in this leg. So we're gonna work on that. So now I'm gonna go through palpations.
She's gonna sound like Fizzle's breathing.
I know. It's okay, it's a part, this is real life. We're just going for it. You wanna be a part of it? And Tide does not care. Tide does not care.
He's used to the hounds.
He's used to the hounds. So we feel a lot of... So we're tight in here, we're already getting some reaction in here. So this is somewhere where I'm gonna work. Down the pectorals. We're tight in the pectorals. So that's definitely somewhere that I'm gonna work. We're gonna start with esophageal and just feeling, but right now I'm just kinda palpating, seeing where the tight spots are. Down in the shoulder. Good boy. Oh, we're already getting some... He's already starting to fall asleep. Good boy.
He loves it.
And I have worked on Tide before. He loves bodywork and we've actually gotten him moving pretty well. He responds really well to bodywork. Just feeling around in here, there's some tightness up in here. Go along on this door side. Right here, there's some tightness. And work on that. Right in here, and work in there. These hamstrings, if he was reactive, as soon as I got to his hamstring, we're gonna work in there. Down the stifles.
Fizzle, Fizzle, honey. Come here, baby. Fizzle.
Thank you, good girl.
Hi, good girl.
And I probably will do a lymphatic work down in here and just try to work some of this swelling out. But I do feel this swelling in here. See if what's going on in the intercostals. You're standing so good, big guy.
He says I love this.
He does love bodywork, he does. Okay, so we're gonna do the other side, see what's going on there. So he's really tight right here, I already feel that. So we'll work on that. Up in the pole. Right here. Oh, okay. Good boy. Right here, we got some aphesians.
Fizzle interference.
Fizzle interference. Fizzle is our friendly barn dog. Her mom is on a ride right now.
There's her sister.
She's keeping us company. Fizzle is a true barn dog. So I'm feeling the neck, he's got a lot of stuff going on. And then when I just placed his hand on his shoulder, he gave me a reaction. So I'm gonna check in with that shoulder and see what's going on. Very tight in here, I already feel that. He just twitched, he gave me a little message that's...
Gained by a pony.
And he's giving me some cracks as he just turned. Good boy.
Gained by his girlfriend, he is a crush on her.
His girlfriend's coming in the barn. At least this video is very real.
Yeah.
Down the other side, long distance door side, he's very tight in here. And so at the very end, I think I'm gonna... So I actually teach human cupping. And I was like super excited for this course because I saw that cupping was incorporated into bodywork here. So I figured I would incorporate some of my cups after some stretching and pop some cups on to see if that helps Tide, especially with down his back and into his glutes. So we'll do that at the very end. Fizzle has been, um... She has been a statement piece in this video.
Definitely audibly.
Audibly. She's making all... Well, she's made an appearance noise, she's been a good...
Lots of panting.
Tide has been a champ.
Yeah. Fizzle does not handle the heat very well.
Hi baby, you let me know that whole... Oh, good boy. Good boy.
Good girl, okay.
So I'm definitely gonna work in his intercostals to get some of this stuff opened up, cause this just feels a little tight to me. We're gonna work into the glutes. A little tightness here. He's letting me know. And then I'm gonna check his tail at the end too, and then I'll look at his symmetry from behind. So he just let me know something's going on in here. Yeah, good boy. Right in here. Good boy. Hamstrings. He is tight in here.
Going back. Sliding head real quick.
Yeah. Gonna check his tail mobility. So a little bit of resistance as I lift up. Okay to the side, but there is a little bit of restriction as I go to lift up. A little bit tighter than like other horses that I've worked on. And then let me pop up here. Because Tide's a big boy and I'm a little short. Okay. So what I'm noticing right now, and it could be, no, I mean his left leg is forward right now, but what I'm noticing, and I don't know if you can see this, is right now with Tide, his right side, his right back is much, to me, is much higher than his left side and he's shifting. So just a little bit of an imbalance here. So the right hind end versus the left, he's a little bit elevated on the right.
Tide? But we're back.
We're back. Very real. Oh, good boy. So that, oh, there's something going on here. Good boy.
Yeah, you're in the background, it's funny, it's fine.
I had no idea, just kidding.
It's giving a source to the sound of panting.
He's really working into the shoulder here. We're getting some reaction. Little bit of vibration, shaking. And then I'm gonna come in here and do a little bit of skin rolling on Tide. Oh, and we're turning into it a little bit. All the way up to the top of the head. Good boy, and then brushing that out. Good boy Tide. Oh, good boy. Some stuff in here, we got a little bit of reaction in here, so let's see if we can get something else a little bit slower. Good boy, good boy. Can we come in? Opening up that knee. Tide is someone who doesn't give me a ton of response. He is a very stoic boy. Good boy. Working into these intercostals. He's very good with being ground tied. Oh, hey no. Hey no. Oh, that feels good. That feels good right in there. Good boy.
I almost took out your cups.
It's fine. Working into his glutes. Something really tight. Okay, we're tight there, so let's work on that.
Take it, Fizzle.
Oh, Fizzle.
He's trying to follow his girlfriend.
Do the other side. We don't wanna go to doggy heaven.
And she's still right behind Olivia.
Just opening things up. Here. Oh, right there. Got a little bit of cracking going on. And so he's guarding the shoulder a little bit, good boy. Yeah. There's something going on in this shoulder, so we're gonna work here again.
That's a huge reaction for him.
Oh yeah, he never gives reactions like that, so good boy. Our stoic boy. Need more? I'm gonna do a little bit of skin rolling to see if that helps open it up a little bit. Gonna come back in a little gently, let's do some friction, come here buddy. That's better, that's less reaction, good boy. Good boy, yeah. Good boy. Good thing. There's something here. Good boy. Yeah, good boy.
Do you want me to get more close-ups or keep doing like his reaction?
No, this is okay.
Okay.
Just as long as you can see what I'm doing. He's got some stuff right here, so he's tensing right here. Good boy. Good boy, Ty. So tighten here. Good boy, Ty. The glutes, and then... We're working down, I'm gonna work down into his leg where he was swollen. And do like a little bit of myofascial release. And gently pull to get some drainage out. Good boy! That's a big deep breath. He's leaking a little bit.
Ew. Ty, that's kinda gross.
I'm gonna give him... Finish off with him with a little bit of love right here, just giving some strokes, and then I am gonna cup him in a couple places, and then I'm gonna do some stretching. So we'll probably end with some carrot stretches, just to get his neck and upper body. I am gonna pull his tail. At the end.
He's relaxed again. Thought we were gonna get a break for seeing it, but it is not. It's another sign, he loves, but he, he loves bodywork.
He does love bodywork.
Always very relaxed.
Hi, he's so good. Ty's so good, so let me see if I can find my... Yeah, okay. I'm gonna go ahead and cup Ty's shoulder. I know, what is this stuff? A bit of drop things. Good boy. Let those sit for a little bit. And I just have one more. And I'm just gonna pop that guy on that back leg. And I can do a little bit of gliding. When you take this cup. Just a little bit of movement.
Bit face, bit face. You're mush out, honey.
So I'm just gonna do a little bit of gentle friction with the cup. To get some myofascial release. Try and get a little bit of pulling. So with this...
Big is it?
And swelling. I'm sure... I mean, that sunset is beautiful, you can paint that sunset that we're working with here.
That, oh, by the dogs' ponies and sunsets.
Horses, cupping.
Hey, this is true barn life.
This is true barn life.
Oh my gosh, you guys, at least don't stand right in the way of the camera, please.
And I'm just giving this some gentle friction to get some of that fluid moving. This is what happens an hour into the barn.
This is how you know you're raised in a barn.
This is how you know you're raised in a barn. I'm gonna leave that there, I'm gonna leave that guy to set. So I like that we're getting some reaction from the cupping. I mean, something is working here, it could be a reaction from the cups and the shoulder sitting. We're getting some lymph drainage with the cup. Down here, but we're still licking and chewing right now, and Ty does not give a ton of reaction. He'll give gentle reactions, but... Not a ton of licking and chewing from Ty, he's a very stoic boy.
Very interested in Fizzle today.
So I'm just gonna give these guys a little shake. Here's another treats in there. Could you grab me a couple treats, please?
Buy things on the, um, the thing with the helmet. He doesn't really like them, but...
These are good.
Yeah. Shaylan and Milo stole most of them. He might not give you the best stretch with them if that's a good dish. He's not the biggest fan of them. I should have brought actual carrots. He's a very finicky eater, it happens with treats too, so...
Just gonna pop these guys off. So you see... We got some stuff. Pop these guys down. And I'm just gonna get the blood flow going, push that out. This guy already popped off. Boy. We're gonna end with some carrot stretches, hi Fizzle.
He might have to seriously shove it into his mouth for him to accept it.
We might not get any stretches today.
Let me see if I can find some other treats in the tack room here. He's like, "Okay, baby."
Oh, there we go, there we go, good boy! Good boy!
Okay, he likes them today, good.
He likes treats today. Good boy, old man, good boy. To the other side.
Fizzle, honey. Oh, she got some of the discarded treat.
Good boy, good boy. We got that one. And we're gonna try this one to see if he'll do this. I think those two stretches are probably the only ones I'm gonna get today on either side, and I'm happy with that, that we got something. Can we come down here?
He's only good about this one, so, some, some days.
Good boy, good boy, Ty. Good boy, okay, I'll take that, I'll take that. Good boy. And I'm gonna end with a tail pull. Let me do, actually, I'm gonna do some leg stretches real quick. We stretched them in the beginning. Get some nice big leg stretches, good boy. Little bit of myofascial pull, I'm pulling against the skins and I'm letting him a little, pull against me a little bit. Good boy. Can you give me the other one? Right now. Good boy. I'm gonna leave his back legs alone today, because we did some deep muscle work on it, and so I just wanna leave that be for right now. But I am gonna end with a nice little tail pull, he does usually respond well to this, so I'm just gonna gently come back in. I'm gonna pull into this tail, and I can feel him pulling against me as I pull away, and he's pulling, and you see his body position is almost changing. And then I'm just gonna gently let go. Good boy, Ty. And that was my first full bodywork session filmed, thank you so much. Good boy, Ty! Good boy!